Call of meeting order. Act thirty-three. Roll call, please.
Earl Dunn.
Here.
Peter Gafer.
Present.
Emily Vanderman.
Vardeman.
Vardeman. Evy Wood.
Here.
Halise Dubnik.
Here.
And Dwayne Wallace.
Here.
Good.
Ah, this is Carolyn. Can I ask you a quick question? Who has to swear her in?
Uh, it has to be Nina or Ashley, I believe. They're not here, but I think.
Oh, they're not here? Did they not tell you not to be sworn in? No. So we're gonna have to...
I can have you sit up here. I can have you join us, but you can't be a voting member.
Okay, that's cool. Observation.
Yeah.
Welcome to the other side. Thank you, I'm Carolyn. Hi, Chris, nice to be here.
We don't have an action item on the agenda, anyway.
Okay. Harris?
It's just discussion, probably the audio recorded, six.
What about your round four?
Okay, first item. Call the public.
So many.
This is the way. Discussion review on the City of Bisbee Sustainability Plan. I, uh, the idea was to set it up as a strategic plan to go forward. I sent copies to Matt, I think it was, and to introduce.
I emailed out.
Everybody has a copy electronically. Email it.
I'm gonna ask, could you send me another one? I have just had a computer malfunction and had switched from PC to Apple.
That boy.
Bad move, but.
That's a good decision.
But I moved to Apple, so a lot of files that I had were lost on the old computer, and I probably downloaded, if you could send it again to me. Uh, my email address still, it works, PFgaferGmail.
Okay.
Um, but if you could resend it, I would be much grateful.
And I have a problem also. I did get it, I started reading it, I was gonna print it, and my printer, I, I, you know, I can't print anything from my computer anymore. So, and it's hard for me to read that much stuff. I have to go to the library and print it out, yeah, the library can get print. That's what I have to do. Or can they just, can Nina just make us hard copies?
Um, she's not here anymore.
Oh, really?
I don't care.
Well, I mean, for the day. Sorry.
I just, I don't know.
I thought the password.
No, I don't mean today, I didn't mean that.
What happened?
I know. Can you make us over to regal?
Sorry.
Good joke there, dude.
She has gone for the day.
Thank you.
But yeah, I mean, I can get hard copies for whoever, and I can email them.
I'd appreciate it for one.
Me too.
What I would recommend is if we, you send out the new copy, 'cause all I've done is rearranged it, you know, it, well, I consider priorities. First one being water, then food, then shelter, then, like, and then, you know, manufacturing, things on down. And then print that one out, and then we'll start taking it apart, see if there's anything that we want to revise in it, or add to it, or subtract from it, 'cause stuff like LED lights are now happening. So, I don't know if we need to really pursue that anymore, it's a non, it's a going project. Uh, then the strategic, boy, I looked up what strategic plans involve. Yeah. We, we got some work ahead of us if we wanna make that into a strategic. Otherwise, I would say we just use it as a checklist as we go down, arrange it in priority, and then we go through, and then we submit anything we want through City to go through our format, to City Council.
I mean, the other thing is, if things start, you know, being done, it doesn't mean you have to, I don't think we have to change it every time, I mean, these would be, you know, things that we could consider, you know, or that could be considered by the City to do, and then if they do it, great, you know.
Well, they're hurting on money so badly, I don't know how much.
Yeah, they may not do too much.
We might have, we might have to be doing big sales at Safeway or something.
Would, would it be an idea, as an agenda item, for the next meeting, then, to go through, sort of, whatever our comments are on, say, one or two sections? Just go through it.
That's what we did in the, that's what we're doing in the nuisance, that, that one for the pet, we just address one section.
Yeah, because, you know, I, I know me, I can be long-winded, especially when I get involved in it. I get, you know, especially things that I happen to, you know, know a little bit more about, or a little bit more involved with, you know, because I, you know, I have a little more knowledge with it, and I, you know, especially once we start talking, and we start bouncing up ideas, like, one section at a time, yes, it's gonna take us a year, or because of our meetings, unless we can schedule special sessions, special work sessions, and I think that we, we might wanna do that, is see if we can get a work session, that way we can add more, and then keep our regular meetings for anything else that we do.
Well, action.
Yeah, you know, just, just a suggestion, 'cause that way we can try to filter in a work session every now and then, to get together, and to get a little bit more, it's easier.
More special.
Yeah, it's easier open meeting-wise, uh, to do work sessions than it is.
But if you're gonna wanna vote on it, you're gonna do a special meeting, yeah, 'cause you can't vote in work sessions.
Correct. Yeah, and we would, just for our regular meetings, we just keep notes and work sessions, then discussion and action and recommend here. Uh, I'm pretty happy with the way it came in, as far as the way I've got it stacked, and they're just moving chapters around. I did not add to it, I did not subtract from it, 'cause I felt like the Commission should have that authority, not an individual, such as myself. Um, if there's anything I wanna add into it, it would be presented to the Commission. If there's anything any of you feel needs to be added to it, I have the same. Um, we didn't get, we didn't ever get to the sustainable economics portion in here, and if I can, I'll have that written up and then distribute it through Matt and review it. There is a, kinda like a green or a slow economics in the realm.
Hand sanitizer and dust mask manufacturer.
And toilet paper.
And toilet paper, right?
And toilet paper.
Just saying.
You have a toilet paper going on that.
Mine makers.
Just saying.
Let's start with economics, then, what you said.
No, I'll, I'll work it up, and then we'll, you know, when we get to that, then we'll just, our next meeting, we'll just say, do we want to include this in with the Sustainability Plan, then get it added on the website? We'll get pronounced and included in your copy.
So you will distribute it between now and the next meeting, and we'll all have a look at it?
If we get the economic side.
So, for the next meeting, we would have maybe a, a review with comments of the water section, which is number one, the first section, and, um, the sustainable economics, if you have a chance to develop something.
If we wanna get into that, that's something that's gonna be, like, really tough to implement. It's out there, it's knowledge, there's some people that know about it, just to put it into the plans that we ever have to fall back to, or if somebody wants information on it, then we use it. I don't, I don't know how we could ever be putting out directives, says, okay, City, let's move over to, shift over to this type of slower economics. But it's there, you know, so.
I, I'm not gonna be able to meet at the next meeting, 'cause it is, as I said, usually we meet on Thursdays now, which we used to not, and that's when I have chorus practice, and that's our, you know, I was willing to, like, if I could miss part of a meeting, you know, and come to practice late, but that's our final dress rehearsal, so I can't miss. So the next meeting, I will not be able to come to, but I, I wanted to bring up something, since you're gonna talk about water first, um, you know, there's this whole thing about the wall being built across the San Pedro River, and there's a concern that, because we don't really know even exactly what they're gonna do, but we've heard that they're going to build something across the whole river where it could dam it, or, you know, partially dam it, or however they're gonna do it, but there's been problems with that, and the San Pedro River, you know, and in the sustainability in our thing, also, we talk about, about it, but it directly affects our water supply, because it feeds the aquifers, besides sustaining, you know, wildlife and everything else, and so, I know there's, you know, this is a problem, because the federal government has decided to bypass all the usual things, no anything, and just go ahead, no environmental impact studies or, or anything. And they're not even allowing, uh, they're not telling federal, other federal agencies what they're doing, they're not telling state and local agencies, and I went to a meeting about this already. So, I don't know what's gonna happen, but Ann Kirkpatrick wrote a letter, I'm sure they haven't even answered, but, you know, to just try to, to express some of this, and to say, you know, is there some way we can have a meeting, you know, where the, the public is at least as informed of what's going on, and, but it directly affects stuff.
I'll put that on the agenda for next, next meeting.
Okay, but I won't be here, so, but anyway, I just wanted to bring that up, because it directly, uh, impacts, you know, stuff that we cover here, so. I don't know how we can contribute, or, or say something to the City Council, you know, about specifically what's going on, 'cause I did go to the, to the Board of Supervisors meeting, but they say they really don't have any power to do anything, all they, they can make a suggestion or write, but they can't, they have no power. And I don't know if, you know, and the state of, of Arizona is trying, I don't know if they passed it, but they passed through the House, um, of a thing trying to prevent any local or city governments from doing, from interfering, or saying, having any say over anything having to do with the border wall. And so, you know, and we're a charter city, right? Bisbee's a charter city, so we should, we've gone through this before, where they do the plastic bad van, but anyway, so, the state likes to just say, well, we don't care, you know.
Sure, go ahead, do it, they just won't give you your money.
Right, right. So, I don't really know what we can do, or if we can bring it to the Council, or if they wanna discuss it, or, and, and the thing is, we just don't even really know exactly what they're doing, and, and, and I was from a state, you know, I, I was from Florida, where, you know, the Army Corps of Engineers made canals and all kinds of stuff, and it blocked the flow to the Everglades of water, and actually, that's also where water gets filtered out, it also affected, affected the whole, not only ecosystem, but the water supply, and so it's the same kind of thing, and then they realized they screwed up, and they had to spend, you know, millions or maybe billions of dollars, I don't know how much it costs, but, you know, when I left there, they were in process of starting to try to ameliorate the problem they caused, so, what I'd like is to know, what, what plans, what have you built, what have you decided to build, does it really take into account all, all the possible things, 'cause we could end up with a big problem, and then they're gone, and we're stuck. Could, could you guys, okay. Okay, that's my piece. Could you, could you not, as a, as an organization, I guess that's what you guys are, as a committee, write a letter to the powers that be, requesting them to come and give a public presentation to enlighten what she's saying? Explain to us what you're doing.
Our, our chain of command would be up to pass up through the city staff to Council, or you take it to Council.
Right.
And what we would have to do is write the particulars up as to what we would like to see.
We have, we have the agenda item on it.
Right.
Vote on it first.
Right, but I mean, she's, she's, you have a very valid, you know, 'cause everybody is. Well, and you can find out more information, if you wanna read Kirkpatrick's letter that she wrote, I, I think I have a copy at home, but also, she didn't even say about the water supply, she just talked about ecotourism and, and, you know, the environment, but she didn't talk specifically that it would also affect our water supply, you know, the San Pedro River, it may not look like a big river to compare to some rivers, but it's essential to our, or, you know, whole ecosystem. Right. Anyway.
We could add that to next meeting, since we're doing water, gather some information, see what we can find out.
Yeah, so, so because I won't be here, unless you happen to decide that you can change it somehow from that day to another day, um, you know, all I could do is, can I send information to somebody?
To Matt.
I can send it to you, and you can bring it to, I mean, I, I'm not sure.
And I can share it with everyone.
Okay, would that be the best way to do it?
And also, I mean, if you can't be here for the water, and it sounds like it's important, we move down to the second item in there, which, whether the second item's gonna be, I think it's food, about the food production, and then put the water back on the agenda for the next meeting after that.
But that, well.
Well, you know, what happens if we go through this?
Like, also very.
The November changes in November.
Yeah, but, but also, I think it's important to address it soon, because it's happening, they're going right ahead, they're, they're, they're do, going right ahead with this, they're, they're not stopping, they're working around the clock, so, uh, they've, I don't know.
This was actually proposed, I'm, if it's the same one, um, years ago, about damming up the San Pedro, it was proposed. It wa, and they, I guess they even passed it at one point, but nothing ever, it, for some reason, it didn't even go forth.
The Charleston Dam?
Yeah, yeah, this has nothing, this is, this is just, will be an unintended side of, side effect of them building the wall, it has nothing, they're not talking about damming it for beavers, again, which I remember all those discussions, but it's, it's just happened to do with.
Stopping the flood.
So, yeah, and that's the thing, so, and that's, I, I mean, I'd like to look at the plans, too, I'd like to see what they have engineered, what, what type of flood gates they have, you know, because I've seen the ones, other parts, that they, the water won't push it, I mean, I remember the sewage going around, and the sewage was about the, about as fast as the San Pedro coming across from Naco, and it didn't, you know, I'm just, I'd like to see, too, just, just at least a note.
I mean, 'cause stuffs get stuck, and I mean, I talked to one of the people in Border Patrol, and they said, yeah, they have to open those, they have other things that are, that are, you know, what do you call it, like the arroyos, you know, that, where it's dammed, and they have to make sure they go open those during, you know, monsoon season and other times that it rains, or, you know, 'cause stuff very fast gets clogged up, you know, pieces of trees, branches, leaves, whatever, can easily clog it up in no time at all.
We probably aren't gonna change anybody's mind, but it, we have a responsibility to, to do what we can.
Do the part.
End up passing along to the Council and seeing.
Well, and also to say something to the state, that, you know, if they haven't passed it yet, and I, I'm sorry, I don't have the number of the bills, but, I, anyway.
And that's, we can, we can.
That there's a reason to, like, you know, why are you trying to do this?
And we can say that, I, I think those bills about, like, local, we can say whatever we want to, it's just, I mean, and technically, since it's not in city limits, there's not, the city has no purview, other than say, hey, this is next door.
Well, in the, but even in the, in our, in our Sustainability Plan, it says, underwater, you know, the surrounding areas, too.
Yeah, yes, but that's, that's for our, we're a commission, we have no, like, real legal authority, and that's what, and that's what I'm saying, but I think, I definitely think we need to, hey, have, do our best.
What I'd prefer is that we would take this from the approach of water, the hazards that are gonna be opposed, you know, against our sustainability and our life and well-being here, if that fence is built. And I think that's where we would get our greatest leverage, is saying, this could be, pose a danger or extreme hardship on us locally.
It'd be nice to have the general plan.
Yeah, I, I.
Because they're very, you know, I mean, there's, there's even more to it with the water, you know, all the salros that are getting destroyed, and they're just kicking off the cactus, and some of these indigenous species. Right, I even, I even go into that. That's a whole, that's a whole place for, yeah. I know, yeah. But I mean, it'd be nice to know what, what their plan is, because they've never released a master, master plan to us.
I, I like to know, too, I just, I also think we need to be careful of getting bogged down on that one issue, that we, we needed to say something or learn what we can, we also don't wanna get so stuck on a, on a national issue.
We don't wanna get, get caught politically.
Well, well, that, and then that we, that we ignore everything that we can do locally.
Yeah.
You know?
I mean, I think you have a, a opportunity, but you might not make, make a change, but if people say, well, hey, you guys never did anything or tried anything, you can say, yes, we did, this is.
We tried, we tried our best.
Sustainability Committee tried to do.
That's a positive political step that we're taking.
Would it be appropriate to have a special meeting, um, between now and the regular meeting, that, um, we could, like, could be.
You ever get that sinking feeling?
That was amazing.
Sink right into the water, right? Or the sun goes.
Since we have quite a lot of group here.
Um, what I would say is, if we're gonna do that, would it be like a public forum or a public forum that we?
You could open it, yeah, you could open it as, to have.
It would be, a special meeting would be out into the pub, this is actually a special meeting, isn't it?
This is regular.
Well, it's special meeting slash regular meeting, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause we, we had to reschedule.
I mean, I guess nobody comes to our meetings.
They might, though, you know, if they knew that, it's a.
Did some pump-up items, we could.
Right, yeah.
But then, I bet you that one, it was twice. Um, but I, I would say we need to gather all the information that we can concerning this, prior to having a public.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll look for, you know, the paper that I got from Ann Kirkpatrick's thing, and I did go to the Board of Supervisors meeting, and they were going to try to do something, but again, I don't know what they actually did, you know, they were just gonna try to request a meeting, uh, to inform, you know, where people from, you know, the, whatever, Border Patrol, or the, you know, Homeland Security, actually, Homeland Security, uh, would come and just inform the public. So I don't know if they're willing to do that or not.
I would like to see Ann Kirkpatrick come down here and let us know what she knows about it, you know, generate a letter.
She'll, I guess you could call her office, I mean, you know, and see if they found out anything. Another one you might wanna think about is Rahalba. Um, you know, I mean, you could ask him, all I can say is no, but he may, he may surprise you. Yeah. It's hard now, probably, nobody wants to travel, 'cause of coronavirus.
Well, that's another thing, let's act, go, get past that, but.
Yeah, they wouldn't even let me drive to New Mexico.
But anyway, I, you know, I'll, I'll try to get the information I have and find out whatever I can, and, um, so, if you think we might have an extra meeting, if it could not be on a Thursday night, though.
Let, let's see what happens with the coronavirus, and, well, we gather together, and we set up a special meeting some, one evening, where we invite the public, saying, we need to get your input, here's what we found, and, would that have to be scheduled in, like a regular Commission meeting, or?
Uh, we could do a, um, we could, like what Dwayne was saying earlier, do a work session, um, to work, and that, you would invite.
Just as an information exchange?
I mean, it would be a little more freely discussed.
Free form, okay. But that's under the first chapter of water, and what the water issues would be with that fence, right?
I will say, just FYI, if it does go further, we're talking about not having, like, if we have meetings, that it's possible that people, like residents, won't be able to attend, they'll have to just look, watch online, try and chime in online.
It's probably, it's, they're doing the, they're doing the basketball playoffs without anybody watching.
Yeah, but as of now, it's, it's not.
But Arizona's so far, knock on Finkwood, maybe, yeah, Finkwood, Arizona's been okay, I mean, we've had cases.
Nine.
Yeah, and as of, as of today.
You're off agenda.
Although, actually, I just heard that the governor is declaring a state of emergency so that they.
He did at three.
Get more funding and stuff like that.
For?
For, you know, whatever, for the health, for, I don't know what exactly.
Health issues.
Yeah, it's, it's just to help, help the health industry with that.
Yeah, like whether it be test kits, or just funding for whatever, you know, whatever they need.
Um, speaking of sustainability, Freeport-McCoyne is gonna be holding two tours on the twenty-fifth.
Yes.
And Matt will send out the information and the dates, that, uh, ones in the morning at eight or eight-thirty, and the ones at one-thirty.
Yeah.
And then we can go in there as part of the city staff.
Sorry, what were the times again?
Um, let me see if I can find it.
And then we can go and look at, at, uh, what they've done for remediation from a sustainability plan, you know?
The, uh, the date is Wednesday, March twenty-fifth, uh, first tour is at eight-thirty to eleven AM, and the next one is from one to three-thirty.
So do we have to, like, all ahead of time, or what do we?
Just kinda, I'll, I'll send out the email anyways, but, um, and then reply whether you will be.
Is, presumably there will be a limit on the number of people who could have.
Um, I would probably, we, um, like, for us, the city, we're trying to break up our employees, like, to go half in the morning, half in the, but we're taking, like, our city bus, and, you know, some of the other.
And if, if enough of us cannot get in, get on it, then they, Freeport would set up a tour for us, they're, they're very amiable that way. I'll tell you, it's pretty awesome, go down, halfway down in the pit.
Is that what you do?
You been to the bottom?
When I was a little kid, I got to see my dad working, yeah, they used to take a bus to the bottom, and they drove me around, and then they came back up, yeah, and I got to ride with my dad from the way.
Pretty strange being down there, isn't it? It's not, it's not like looking from the view.
Well, it's when the roads were really good, but.
Yeah.
There's no more roads anymore.
Well, there's partway down.
Yeah, they used to be really good roads, yeah.
Uh, we get the LED streetlights as part of this, they're coming in.
Yep, they're coming up.
Arizona streetlights have been fixed. Does anybody have any other issues with the Sustainability Plan, or suggestions, or anything we need to do before the next meeting?
Are you gonna, can you just resend it to all of us? 'Cause I just, I was looking for my copy, and I can't find it.
The, what, you sent me?
What, he sent?
Yes, yeah, I will send that out.
Okay, and if we can get hard copies, then we'll put them in our binders, and we can.
Okay.
You know, codes on and stuff, and that could.
I'm on Sustainability, I do it electronically, I do my markup and everything on that.
Can you get the?
I'll show paper.
Well, that's the thing, I can just upload it on my Word and do it that way.
Edit.
Edit, yeah.
Yeah, I usually bring my iPad.
But yeah, I, I'll, um, for the next meeting, I'll have a hard, hard copies for everyone but Dwayne.
Okay, from the new ones that were sent out?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Is it, excuse me, minutes, but since I've confessed that I'm switching to Apple, if I wanna edit, um, it was produced in loading, right?
On to Pages.
It was produced in Pages?
No.
It was produced in documents in Google?
Right.
Yeah, you, you should be able to upload it.
Yeah, it'll upload to any WordPress.
Usually, they've made it pretty compatible. I just switched, too, and I've been struggling, yeah, but I, I found I can open it in Pages.
You can open it in Pages, and then when you save it and send it back, you have to save it as a DOC.
Yeah, and it's, I can, I'll, I'll do classes at.
Or, or, push comes to shove, open it in Google Docs, those are Google, Google Docs is so much easier. Yeah, 'cause if you do it in Pages, and you try to send something to somebody else who doesn't have Apple, they have Pages.
When you, when you go to send it, you just, you hit what kind of document you want to send to us.
And there's something called Google Docs?
Yeah, yeah.
And it's sweet, 'cause you can use that anywhere in the world, or like, you can share for that document, and then we could share it with Matt.
If you have this little email up in where the little, it's like the six dots are, you click on it, and you scroll, and it'll say Docs, Google, and it'll say Docs, you go in there, and that's where you can open it, and then when you open it, go to open, it'll say open as, and then you can click on Google Docs, and it'll let you do it.
It's nice.
That's what I'm gonna do.
Thank you.
Okay, any other items with the Sustainability Plan? Uh, sometime I'm gonna be hitting you up to get us a tour of the plant?
Uh, to staff, through my boss.
Yeah, I, I can set it up. Yeah, I, I can set it up.
Man, I am nobody, I'm just an operator now, it's wonderful.
Need you, Ron?
Yeah, just like get a, get ahold of, like just get ahold of Matt, who can get a lace suit, get ahold of Ron, and then schedule it with Ron. Cause I'm usually actually getting dirty and he gets to a pretty.
So where are you working?
Can you kinda give us a little background after?
Sure, um, I was born and raised in Mesa and I've taught science here in Bisbee, I moved to Bisbee in like ninety seven. So I'll be retiring this spring and I thought, oh, I've always, um, so many and for the last, as teachers, too many times I've said, no, no, I'm too busy, too busy. So I'm looking forward to finally uh getting back to the community. Um, I believe in sustainability and glad to be here, glad you guys are here. Um, getting solar panels, so that's my first step in that direction. But I used to be at, um, I used to bike all the time to work too. I just had a knee replacement, but hopefully I'll be getting back on the bike again too, so I'm interested in bike safety.
Therapy, do your therapy.
Yes, and I'm glad you guys are talking about the law, just because I'm just thinking, um, just on a basic level, uh, blocking sediment and changing the course of rivers is not sustainable.
And the biological diversity.
Yes.
Something she didn't mention, she has a master's in biol- biology education.
Yes, school of engineering, forestry, uh, head of NAU, so. And that's what brought me down to this part of Arizona mostly when I started taking field coursework. Um, the insect biology, mammalogy, uh, ornithology. Our field studies were at the Chiricahua's and the Santerias, and I was like, oh, how do people live down here? What kind of job could I get to stay down here? So I really love it down here.
What was your engineering?
I'm a biodiversity. Um, I just, it looks, looks really fancy, cause it's part of the school, the, my, it's a master's in, in teaching, but it's from the School of Engineering, Forestry and Natural Resources. Not, instead of education, so I had to do a little bit more work than.
That's, that's significant.
Carolyn, isn't that right, you're moving towards complete, um, off the grid living in downtown Old Bisbee?
Yes, I'm trying, I got water barrels and uh, and that, pretty soon I'll be on the solar panels.
Yeah.
Off the grid in town.
Yeah.
Where at?
Well.
On Mason Hill. And I just saw the, uh, turkey vultures. They are back, landing in the tree.
I'm not a big fan of those.
By the way, with the, as far as in our sustainability plan, cause.
You've done that for just attention?
All of a sudden he'll disappear.
Speaking of like solar, since you were just saying that. Now, I know that there are some buildings here that, that have solar.
Joan Warner's.
Yeah.
It's all Main Street on the.
Yeah, but I wonder if there's any way, uh, well, like if, for instance, if, uh, if they rebuild City Hall, you know, or any, I don't know what they're gonna do yet, right?
It's a suggestion.
But we could suggest, hey, you know, maybe some solar panels, whatever we do, let's make it sustainable.
I also have some.
You know, wind turbine, you know.
One of the things that you brought up, uh, in, in the plan was the, uh, uh, the pump that's in Old Bisbee at the, at the.
Pump house?
Pump house. I have a better suggestion. I think that's a bad piece of money because it's used very rarely um, to, just to fill up. And then during monsoons, you don't, there's enough water going in there. I would suggest the lift station at the Old Mewo Goltz, because that's two twenty-five horsepower pumps. That's the biggest draw in the city probably, other than the sand, the wastewater plant. The wastewater plant has solar, uses it solar. But it's, and I actually started looking into this when I worked for the city, is getting, that you can, there you can cover there with enough solar to basically offset those pumps, cause those pumps, that's everything for, that's all the work of Old Bisbee. They're in the monsoons, those things are going all the time. With all the, all the runoff that comes in there. So that, you know, so I, I think there's some good ideas like that, um. Library possibly, but you know.
That, that area and various corners were backups to up in Old Bisbee. Um, the design plan that we had in mind was that we had to sort of pump up a solar to a gravity feed. So we put a whole big tank up high enough so it matches what Old Bisbee's needs are. Then we could supply water throughout the whole district by gravity.
Well, and that's, and that's, but I, and also just, I know, this is, we're all gonna talk about this. The amount of engineering and money to treat the water in Old Bisbee, you're gonna have to replace every single line. And you can't slip lines already.
You, you're talking about the fire main, fire.
Um, I, I like what's going on with Arizona water on that, I think that's a good direction.
Well, with Jim that was on the board, he had a lot of background in the water and water systems and the engineering of it. And we were looking at getting possibly a couple of army surplus purification trailers. Cause it'd be an emergency system.
Yeah, I, I just.
And.
Then you gotta park it somewhere, and if you park it up at Almacklin, I guarantee you, somebody's gonna end up using that for their moonshine still or whatever else.
Probably left tech economics.
I just, I, I, I think, and that's, that's one of the things too, is why I started going to some of the conferences and stuff like that, is to start off small. Like little things like that, you know, you know, like what we did is, is, you know, um, one of the things we did in, in Grants, where we do a water wastewater thing, is we helped transform a pond, cause we also do parks there. And we did some like terrafilm, not terrafilm, some things there, the pond, to make that pond and, and like to draw wildlife to that, to help keep the pond clean. And those are things, little things like that. You start off with smaller things like that, with volunteer work, and then you build onto that. You know, you know, it's like, yes, it'd be great to do methane, we can't there at that point.
Right.
That's not gonna happen. We don't have the loading going into it and that money, you know, but there's other things we can do.
But piggybacking on to his thing he's talking about, the, um, the ponds, that's, you're doing a, you're building a wetland. And then that falls back into that whole sustainable tourism we talked about earlier. You know, you're starting to set up wetlands around here that are utilized for a reason, you know, but you're also having that other.
But you can't, you can't do that with the fire suppression pump.
Right, yeah.
Those fish need to come out.
Thing is, you know, we're, we're talking about good ideas, and that's all I'm asking for.
Oh, no, that's not.
That was just like, well, emergency system, backing up.
And that's, and that's the one thing I've really, that they've really harked on me about, is that you start small, you know, you do, you start up tossing out reusable bags and stuff like that, or, or reusable water bottles, you know, you get a bulk of those, you start there and you grow. Because it's tougher to change, you can't change, like, you know, we, we're not gonna change the federal government, right? We can say, we can say what we want to. But you start locally in your own house, you know, hey, try to find out how to make our recycling program more sustainable. Because that's the big thing, cause it costs, the city loses money on recycling, let's be honest, right?
Yeah.
A lot.
Yes.
I love recycling, I do it as much as I can, but let's be honest, right? Um, so we need to find ways of doing that, to, to take these things and then you grow off of that. And, but you're right, throw out the big ones, because out of those big ideas, you start pulling up these little ones.
Well, get the lower.
Hanging fruit, okay?
And we get the, just what you're saying, we, we get what we can. If we get one person to put in a water saving toilet.
We're, we're gonna change. We're gonna, we're gonna start down there doing some just LED switch outs and just some of our, and, cause we have the building, the press building. Just something as simple as that, okay? You know, we're gonna do that, and once we get all this other stuff done. It's, it's little things like that that end up building up. You know, we've done some things down there, as far as operationally, to try and save money. You know, put certain, certain aerators on tires instead of on twenty-four, you know, it's little things like that.
Yeah.
You take the small things and then it builds up.
It adds up, it really does.
And there's things that, you know, there's things that I'm sure we could find somebody, um, to come and look at the way each, all the offices are set up. Hey, you know, this is a better idea for this, you know, go to the fire station, go to the, say, hey guys, just, you know, try this out, try, you know.
Even if it's just ends up being a plan, it goes on a shelf or goes in the block.
You know, you save a, pennies add up, right? So if you save a penny here at the library, and another penny here, whatever, ends up. Maybe that's how you do it.
But you know, also there's the whole science, uh, thing here.
Yeah.
You know, they start, and they might be interested in, in, uh, and also the U of A.
Oh, yeah.
Or, and maybe Coach's College, but definitely U of A, might be interested in, in doing a partnership and trying to figure out some things.
Exactly, you know, figure out some small things, or pick one like pet project, that Sunset and U of A, that we can all, the city.
Did, did you hear from Ains? Receptacles for recycling?
I ran into somebody.
They were gonna start supplying bags or containers?
We, we're not going down the road at this time.
Dude that's doing the hemp.
So we, I haven't even gone to that, cause we're so far away from that right now. It'd have to be a, it's, it would be a big change. Any little change takes a long time, so.
So that might be somebody to talk to. Remember how we talked about the wastewater plant?
The, the original idea there that came out of the past from this commission was to take water through solar pumps, the grade B water and up to the city property where the old ponds and the old dump was by the airport.
Oh, where the gun range is now.
South of that.
So it's, it's past the old racetrack.
Okay, you took, you, okay, are you talking about where the old lagoons were, right? Where the police have their gun range at now?
Oh, police guns.
Well, well, they're, they're, they're clean clothes, they're not, they're not, I mean, there's some waters, but the, on the left-hand side of Airport Road, that's the old lagoons, and that's now some dry, some, and they're dumping, and then you go around, they have police have their gun range there.
They, they own city property there.
Oh, yeah.
And looking at the manufacturing site, the hemp and cane. And we could start doing all sorts of supplies with that, or send it up so that somebody comes in with a business plan. And the city would, would entertain that, to leasing that property and if we supplied it, you know, so.
See, and well, in here, in here, and like I said, I, I think, this is always a problem with, with using reuse for things like that. Is because it does, it doesn't matter how horrible of a farmer somebody is, it's never their fault. It's always the water's fault, or it's the dirt's fault. I just, when it comes to reuse, because I've, I've read on this. I, I think there's, I think there's some viable, there's enough, I think there's enough like flooding there, just the, just from the rain to do some. Did, it do some, do some catches and stuff like that?
Are you talking about, cause what I know is that when you go on Swan Road.
Right, that's.
Off Airport Road for the old dump site, and then if you keep walking.
Yeah, there's the old wastewater lagoons, they've all been cleaned up, cleaned up and everything like that, um, clean clothes. But, and then around, like surround there, the police are now, they have their, cause there's actually a fence, they have a fence around it now. Um, they have their, uh, qual, I think they do the qualifying and stuff.
They do qualify me.
They do all the qualifying.
They do, we, cause we built big verms and stuff there, uh, and they have ha- handgun and rifle.
Yeah.
Qualifications there.
But yeah, uh, a couple of weeks ago, I went to Whiteboard Draw.
There's a lot, no, there is. There's a lot of deer and everything out there. I've seen quail, quite a lot out there.
The, the city, you know, the, the, the county has four more years to come up with a plan for, for the effluent, right? So, take it four years, right?
From the amount that they're tagging, we have still.
Yeah.
Well, and that's, but, but the, the thing is, is that, and then didn't the city just sign a, a renewal of Freeport? How, how many years was it for? Five, ten? Because, and that's the thing, so, there's a good chance that the effluent that is, is all tied up right now.
Not all of it, no.
Well, between the county and then between.
Well, the county, the county.
Yeah, they haven't even done engineering.
The county's only even taken half, not, maybe even, not even half.
If, if Freeport, I, cause I, I was at the plant when Freeport was taking it for reclamation. If they start working on a dump on the number seven.
They didn't increase what they wanted, they just renewed, but there's still leftover.
Yeah, there is.
And they're not gonna be running that water for twenty-four hours, that's just for dust control. And we, we could fill the tank up.
Well, well, I would say, actually, but that, they do, they do run that pump twenty-four hours a day. When they're filling, it's twenty-four hours a day. Because it's right there, we do all.
There's still storage potential because all of it's not being used.
I, I think we could find a solution to this.
No, I, I think.
Cause we left enough in there to where we're gonna have some leeway.
I, I think, yes. I think you need to, I think we would need to, or the city, the city would really need to make sure that whoever does decide to do this, or an agreement, because that's the thing too, it's, I think this, I don't know how that works. I know the city would have to, I don't know if they'd have to attain, if it's like contracting out, I don't know. I don't know if they could just select, or, hey, we're looking for proposals and you have to, because that's a legal issue that is very gray, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, what, what we would do is come up with the idea.
And then, and then.
And then if it looks, you know, if it looks good, then we start taking the next steps to the point where somebody comes in, says, I'm ready to sign a contract.
By, by code, any, and this is in the code, any, any, uh, any money profit made off the sale of anything from the wastewater plant has to be reinvested in the sewer fund. So that's, if you sell effluent or biosolids, it can only go back to the enterprise fund, it's in the code.
That is correct.
Just, just, just so you guys are aware.
That's okay.
Yeah, I just, which means you can use that money for improvements.
So if you, so whatever percent, so hypothetically speaking.
Well, go ahead, sorry.
If you went into a contractual deal with someone and said, okay, we'll give you the land, we'll provide you with effluent water, and you give us a cut of fifty percent of your profits, that fifty percent that would go in.
Yeah, yeah, whatever.
They would be available.
It'd be, it's not just for the plant, it's for the whole collection system, wastewater plants.
It's for the wa, for the, that's the sewer fund, sewer fund.
That's sustainable. It wouldn't be fifty percent, it'd be.
That money can be used for equipment upgrades because things age, or, or, or whatever, you know?
Maybe not raising our sewer.
Yes.
But that, that's another issue on the water that I'm like, is to look at, as to what that could do for us and then put that into the sustainability plan. Even if it's just hypothetical, it, it would still be on the list, and then we could go into detail on it if we picked that as a major topic.
I know, I mean, we're talking about the lagoons, th- that is, uh, our location that we have been using and still use for, um, any yard debris, any construction debris and stuff, all goes out there, um, and that is part of with the, part of the RFP that's going up for City Hall being, uh, demolished, is part of the thing is, part of one of the RFPs is to take the walls, uh, when it gets demolished and put, they'll go out there. That's one of the options.
No, you're not paying tipping fees per ton for second cement.
And we could dig, we could build those a trench in, bury it down deep enough and then cover the trench.
No, it, it'll go right in the lagoons, cause that's what we're doing now.
Isn't that burns?
Huh?
It's not another trench, that's just.
A hole.
No.
Not anymore.
No.
On top of the soil, just sit there?
Yeah, they, yeah. And that's how it is, and it's been, I mean, there's been debris there since before I started with the city. I mean, co- construction, like everywhere. So I mean, those are not, those lagoons for construction debris, like concrete, dirt, yard, yard debris, that's about it.
So how do you ensure that it's not toxic debris? It's clean film?
Cause we only allow certain people to go out there. We screen it pretty much, screen who goes out. But there, and most of them have been filled up, are even, I mean, they're not completely full, but they have a lot of stuff, even before I started with the city.
You, you know, this is, this is a sustainability thing for the, much in the future, cause you'd have to get a hold of, if you got a hold of a roller cone or a jaw crusher, you could take that concrete and you can make your film out of it.
Yeah.
I heard that there's ways recycling concrete to make fresh concrete out of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not around here.
But I was just trying to say.
Being used for asphalt, not around here.
Yeah.
Everywhere, but.
Well, but why, why couldn't, I mean, there's a problem, you talked about recycling, that we're losing money on it. And, you know, China used to take, uh, the recycled stuff from the United States and they stopped doing it. So now it's like, this is an opportunity actually for people right here in the United States to.
If you had, if you had a process.
Processing it.
And that's, yeah, for, now, I, that uses a lot of water though, that's the thing, I, I think processing things and recycling, I believe, would, you'd probably use a lot of water, especially for like pumping out, let's say, cardboard or something like.
Yeah, I, well, I, it depends what it is, like, didn't somebody, wasn't somebody gonna do a glass recycling thing here?
All sorts, all sorts of it, I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, part of the, the cost, there's two different bigger, big costs with recycling, it's one, the personnel, and two, the travel to dump it.
Years ago, one of the things that was brought up by Bob Kasun, I believe it was Bob Kasun, many, many moons ago, was to take all the bottles and to crush them and to incorporate them into the asphalt. Cause you crush it to a finite now, so you have chunks that can obviously, but to a finite, and that was incorporated into the, was to be incorporated into the asphalt. So when you lay that asphalt down, it's silica that's still in there, as you drive. was to be incorporated into the asphalt, so when you lay that asphalt down, it's silica that's still in there, as you drive down the highway reflects, giving a little bit more reflective to your road, and I don't know whatever happened with that.
That plastic is being recycled now for asphalt.
Right, and it's like, and, you know, just because we don't go here now doesn't mean we can't look into it.
Oh, yeah, no.
But you imagine if we were the ones that started pulverizing the plastic bottles, and start, and we had a method to utilize it.
Right. Yeah, I mean, why, why not come up with ideas, and maybe, maybe we could do it?
Yeah, with the city of Tucson, and of course, it's really small, but they got the machine, uh, probably everybody's heard about it, but they got the small machine that does, makes, takes, you put a bottle in, and it's sand after, once it gets to the bottom, glass, glass bottles. And their plan is to get, once they get going with the project, is to get a bigger machine that'll crush it, and then start putting that into the concrete. Stuff like that.
And and that's, I would almost, because I, I I don't know what the the specs would have to be for for asphalt, like, honestly.
Yeah.
But but concrete's easy, throw it in the concrete, and that's, you can do that.
Yeah.
I mean, then you're not worrying about mag standard, you know, as long as it passes your PSI testing.
When they make, uh, adobe, they only use like seven percent cement.
Right.
And that, that same thing with glass, it's only gonna be very low amount just to bind it.
And if you throw the multiplication, we'll hopefully do, the other thing you can do with your plastic bottles too, and I don't know why we don't do this around here, is build sustaining walls. They do it in the Philippines, sustaining walls, they take plastic bottles, fill them with sand, and that's what they build their walls with, and then they adobe. And, and, you know, hey, with a little rebar.
There's all kinds of ideas, I mean, in, uh, in, uh, where, where was I, uh, Rio, I don't know, in New Mexico.
Rio Ranch.
Outside of Taos, they have, uh, a whole sustainable community, and the buildings are made out of, I don't know, bottles and all kinds of things, you know? I didn't get to see the whole thing, because it was too late in the day, but, you know, and we actually have very creative people here.
There's, there's some cool things, New Mexico is, just because it seems to be a little bit more open than Arizona is.
Eclectic.
Uh, eclectic, yeah, yeah, I used to do deliveries in rodeo in the portal, it's eclectic is definitely the word for it. Um, but especially out in rodeo, there's a lot of funky things that people are, because there's nobody to tell them to can't. Here, here, you know, you're gonna have a county truck or Joe Ward pop up on you, and say, you can't do that, oh, you know, out there.
There's, there's people who use, get tough, get tough sheds out there, insulator, put windows in, put in all the plumbing and stuff.
Yeah, I I.
And then the the.
There's people.
Well, maybe we could, maybe we could have a little factory here that then make something like that.
Well, the tiny homes, we thought, why couldn't we refit about there?
Or why don't we just do what Vegas does, and do the, um, containers, there's a container mall in Vegas that uses all those containers. And now they're doing little, uh, they're doing, um, tiny houses on the containers, they're container homes.
Yeah, those are awesome.
Yeah, because we talked about tiny homes, and that, there were.
Yeah.
And those containers are even almost cheaper, in a sense, than some of the, uh, tiny homes, because you've already got the prefab.
Yeah, they make some really neat homes.
Oh, the, the, the mall in 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 Vegas is so cool, I miss two stories, and it's like Lincoln Logs, you know how they set it up, but then it's all connected with the, um, terraced, um, upper walkways and the stairways and everything.
We were looking at, uh, infill of Old Bisbee, and those lots are quite small. Getting the walls all certified was the first step by civil engineer, and then looking at the tiny homes that would become, that would be like net zero homes, solar panels, your greenhouse, your water collection, you know, everything as much as possible, it wouldn't be a hundred percent, but it would be, you know, and then to live car free, that took us to the next step. Would we need, you know, we need a grocery store or something up there where people can go down and get the groceries and haul them up.
Well, there is a little, I mean, I don't know, I mean, there is the, uh, market up on Brewery Gulch. You know, and they, actually, I was just talking to Barbara, who owns that, and, uh, she was saying, the problem is in Old Bisbee that it's no, that, like, they're a neighborhood grocery, and they get stuff for, like, the people, you know, who live around there, who come. But she said, now, so many of the people have either moved, died, or whatever, and the, and all the, like, something like seventy percent of the homes now are Airbnbs, that the people don't live there.
Exactly.
If you try to find rentals, even in Old Bisbee, people have trouble finding rentals, I mean, long-term rentals, I'm not talking about, you know, one night or two nights. And you can't find, you know, so people are coming to Bisbee, buying up homes and not living there, just turning them into Airbnbs. And so they're not really participating in the community, and it's a big problem, right?
And they're not paying sales tax like the rest of us.
And they're not declaring them for their TPT tax either, and they're killing us when it comes to census, because now our population.
Right, so it's a big problem, I mean, that, I mean, a big problem to the point where people who lived in Bisbee that I I know are actually now moving away, like, they lived in Old Bisbee, they loved it, and lived there for forty years, and they, they said, you know, it's like, nobody's here, it's all, you know, the people come for a night or two, and and.
We're having a cultural breakdown, because the people that were here had friends and 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 it's culture.
That's what's going on with us, is we have, so one of the houses, um, across the street, up the stairs, has become an Airbnb, right? And then he's, the guy's renting out the cave behind his house, it's weird. So, you know, I I come home from work or something, and there's some weird car parked in the parking lot all crazy, and we can't find out who it is. And now we're looking at, you can almost feel the vultures circling, because we have some elderly neighbors around, right? And they're, they're looking for these houses, because then they they, and that's, and that's the problem, you know, there are no, there's, there's not many children in Old Bisbee anymore, you know? We have, you know, and then there, apparently, my son has a friend who decided to show up and hang out at the house tonight, whatever, but there's, so that's what we're dealing with.
We just received two letters from this, um, organization that's, oh, we see that you own this property, and we're willing to pay you, like, I have ten acres out in the valley, we'll pay you two thousand dollars for your ten acres, I'm like, yeah, right! But they also hit on some of my parents' rentals, you know, they're wanting to buy them for nothing, but, oh, where, you know, and they're the Airbnbs, that's what they're looking, they're looking.
Right, but I mean, I feel like this.
Or they have big money, they're coming in by ten at a time.
I feel like this is part of sustainability, that it's not, you know, we don't have enough housing for people who wanna live here permanently. And, you know, we're losing people who who loved it, and now, like they said, it's, it's.
Well, the the Airbnb lobbies have tied our hands, because we're not getting the money, and it cashes off.
Well, and we can't do anything, because Ducey just passed a law that leaves them untouchable, in a sense.
Yeah.
So what we're doing now is we're going after and trying to locate all the Airbnbs, you know, by going and looking at advertisements and such, and then hitting them, those that are not paying taxes, and, you know, going that route and putting them on the rolls, that now we know you're an Airbnb, you're not a, you know, a month a month.
Well, so that's what I wanna know, is, is there anything we can do, because it's not just a problem in Bisbee, it's all over.
No, you can thank your lovely governor and, uh, his lobbyists.
No, but it's a problem all over the country.
Right, and see, what they've done is they've they've come in, and they, the lobbyists have come in, and in Arizona in particular, they've cast legislature that you cannot, uh, deny, or you cannot restrict the amount of Airbnbs.
And this is, is because, because it's, these things start off as, it started off as, and you know, it started off innocuously enough, right?
Right, like it was like.
Hey, because you know what, yeah, I've got a spare room, let me make up a little extra money, or, you know, but it's not that anymore, especially in Old Bisbee. If if the people in general, the people who work at all the hospitality places in Old Bisbee cannot afford to live in Old Bisbee.
And then they're saying, well, have them move out here, they don't have cars.
They don't have cars?
You can't live out here.
The bus doesn't run all the time, and the bus, to be honest, the bus schedule does not, is not conducive to people who actually have jobs.
Right.
You know?
So you've got bartenders and wait, and then somebody the other day told me, do you know how much those bartenders make, and I'm like, yeah, how many hours they work? You know, it's like, let's be real.
Do you know what kind of work they do?
Right, exactly, I used to be one, you know, but it's like, so you've got three and four bartenders having to live together, or wait staff.
Yeah.
And, you know, okay, you're young, it's fun, but, you know, to this point, when if, when you're in this town, you can't survive as an individual. You can't afford to buy a home here.
They can rent.
No, you can't rent, because the average rent now is what, six hundred fifty dollars?
Exact, so so, like, like, honestly, there, I think there are two, and and I'm probably gonna get in trouble, but there's like, two good renters and people who rent out, and that's your parents, right, and then Dorian. I mean, I'm sure there's others, realty, but, like, people who actually have nice homes, that they don't rent, they rent it out for, like, livable, because you can get a decent, like, I've got a friend renting from Dorian, who, who has a nice house out here in San Jose for his family. You know, for for a good amount of money, you know, for, well, for a, for a, a good, a decent, you know, amount of money. It's not like in Old Bisbee where, hey, I've got a closet I rented for eight hundred dollars, you pay, you gotta pay the sewer and the satellite, you know, because that's what they're doing. I mean, it's it's unfortunate, but that's, that's the way it is.
So, so can you explain exactly what the thing is, so we have no, so any, any amount of Airbnbs can come in, you can't stop it? There's nothing that says you can have a room, but you have to live in the rest of the house?
From my, from my understanding, there's no restriction, we as a city cannot, we cannot place a restriction on how many Airbnbs are in your town, that's my understanding.
Really?
Um, and so one of the things that we've looked at going after now is identifying all the Airbnb, because there's, there, we probably, and this is my own opinion, this is an official opinion, probably, we only have thirty to fifty percent of the Airbnbs that we actually know, because they don't all register, because if they don't.
Someone just told me, I guess it was Barbara, that there were something like, what did she say, seven hundred and ten or something, I mean.
Well, that sounds about right, but you'll only find officially, those that officially register, like, with Airbnb organization.
Airbnb or, yeah.
Airbnb pays their taxes, they've, and we get the money from those that are registered with the official sites, but then you have those wildcat.
Yeah, well, because what a lot of people do is they do it on a different website, right? And then what what is, it's basically on our system, you you email them, you get the code to the door, you leave, because I've had friends who do this. They, you leave it in cash, you don't pay online, you leave your payment in cash, and you leave. And, you know, like, I I've got friends who come down, because they'll rent a house, all weekend long, they'll get food, okay, that's, you know, and then that way they have a place for their fam- but it's not, but, and that's the thing, it's.
They're not feeding our clients.
Exactly, for, but for everyone who'd like, it's unfor-, for everybody who will come down and and and, you know, spend the money and, uh, shop locally, and go to Safeway to fill up their, for everybody who does that, you have frat boys or whoever, I don't know whoever it is, coming down, throwing a party, and 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 trashing places.
That's the only restriction that just came up.
That's right.
Was that there's a a limit to, you cannot have outlandish parties because of the the vandalism, I guess there was an assault or something that happened, so that is a restriction, and I use that term loosely, that the state has blown up.
By state law.
By state law, yeah, that that just came down the pipe, but, again, here we are, and we get a bed tax, and that bed tax helps our tourism industry out. Yeah, we're not getting the full bed value of our bed tax, because we have these, like I said, wildcat renters, and.
You know what's going on in, uh, South Beach, Florida, is you have the strip on South Beach, there's like two or three rows lined up with what looked like, you know, small hotels, just lined up with small hotels and homes and whatnot, all these small hotels are all Airbnbs.
And then what they're also doing is, they register, you know, for their taxes, I care, I don't know which is cheaper, I only, I only have a private residence, I don't have a secondary, but one of them is less property taxes than the other, so whatever one is cheaper, what they're doing here is they're using that, so they don't have to pay, uh, the property taxes that they do wherever they're from.
You pay, um, it's about a hundred and twenty-one dollars a rental, we pay, on on my parents', the rentals that they have, that's called the TPT, the transition privilege tax. And they have to pay that to the state monthly, so for every rental that you have, you have to pay this transition privilege tax, well, if you're not declaring it.
Yeah.
I would like to find out.
So you're saying that's how they're trying to go after them?
Well, we're trying to to identify all of them, so we can get, not just the state.
Once you get them identified, I'd like to find out where the break-even point is, to where the state is not getting revenues from us, because these people are wildcatting.
Right.
That's one thing, and the second is, what do we do to find these wildcats, besides online?
Well, there's, I think someone's looking right now, isn't there, is, you know, that, are there, what they're doing is, is people are going in and and looking for Airbnbs, you know, and they identify them, and they write it, write it down, like, you go in, okay, rentals in Bisbee, because you can Google that, and it won't be an Airbnb site, it'll say, oh, you know, we have a weekly rental.
Or they have their own website, like a certain person, who I'm not mentioning.
And so you can find it that way.
And also, you can just talk to people like Barbara, who, who has that store, and she sees stuff that's going on, she lived there a long time, so she knows.
Right. The neighbors.
She told me about all these different places.
So that, I think that's what's, you know, again, don't quote me, but I, my understanding is that's what they're trying to do right now.
Couldn't you go through, like, the, uh, garbage fees and find out who's living here and who's where the alcohol is?
But, yes and no, because you can find out who's living there, but e- even if it's their second home, you don't know if they're renting out.
Yeah.
That's the thing, because you don't know, because they're not individual garbages, once we go to the individual garbages, then that might be a better indication, you know, because they're talking about the individual rollouts. Well, then you know, you know, if you've got this rollout going to a house that has a seasonal person, because even if I'm seasonal, seasonal, yeah, seasonal, um, I'm not, you know, it's it's a bummer, but I live here six months out of the year, because I'm a seasonal person. Um, I'm not renting my place, you know, it's still unfortunate, because it's not being able to be rented, but it's not like we're losing that, um, excise tax for, uh, for tourism. Uh, because you can't, that's something you're not gonna get a tax off of, but rental, any kind of seasonal rental that's not month to month, that's where the city makes their money, uh, for, no, I shouldn't say we make money, that money goes directly to tourism.
For the tourism, yeah, it's all bed tax, whether, from hotels and hotels and motels to Airbnbs.
And I, a lot of the hotels, I think, I heard, I don't know how true is, a lot of them are getting a little bit out of shape too, because why do I always pay the tax, and, you know, these guys are.
Right. Why, that's right, and they're losing money.
And they are, because a lot of people are now going for the Airbnbs, and they're not utilizing the hotels, you know, which, eh, to each his own, but if we're, if you're gonna have a legitimate Airbnb, you should be paying, just like everybody else. I mean, it's, and because the city should benefit for.
But, well, if they were, it's gonna have to come to that to keep the services up for them.
Right, and see, and that's another thing, a lot of times they don't think about, you know, the the more you sneaky it, the less it goes to the city, and the 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 more the coffers go down. You know, it's not, what's gonna pay the bills?
And what happens when we get to that that black day, when, when we say, oh, that's your Airbnb, let it burn.
Well, and here's the thing too, you've got, yeah, you've got no rentals, and that's the other side of the double edged sword, I got no rentals. How are people that are your food service people gonna live? You can't have tourism without bartenders and waiters and renters and and hotel staff, if they don't have a place to live, you don't have those people, so that, how do you have that service? You know, and I, and that's another thing I don't think people realize, because they don't look on their, they look their nose, they're only looking at their wallets.
Right, it's gonna, it ruins the whole town, it's like Barbara said, her, her business has gone down like, you know, it's like one-fifth of what it was, so, I mean, she, she may have.
This is all very good for the sustainability plan, as we've regarded.
I know. They have a stage left.
And is there any way that we could, like, talk to some other cities that have been affected by Airbnbs, like from, so I don't know if Tucson has a big problem.
Oh, I'm sure.
I mean, they are a bigger city, so they have one where.
Any, like, big tourist.
Right, Sedona, yeah, Sedona and.
Sedona.
I I heard, I heard Jerome.
Jerome, yeah, our sister city, yeah, uh, and I was talking, when I first planned council, I was talking to one of the councilwoman, and she was just so proud, because she had, you know, eh, she was there talking about Airbnb and this and that, and I, and it was like, oh, well, that's kinda cool.
Yeah, I I heard, I heard majority of the people in, well, majority of the homes are Jerome now, are not, they have nobody living in it.
Right.
It's all Airbnb, and what's happening to the city for it, have you heard? No, I don't, you know, Dave, actually, Dave, uh, the mayor, he went to the, a meeting about this with other mayors and stuff, and they were like, hey, this is a problem, and I think it was Ducey, somebody from the state government was there, it was like, oh, this is, we're gonna cut that back on regulations, no, look at Jerome, look what's going on, and.
And then you have to couple with Jerome and what's gonna happen to us if we're not careful.
Yeah.
Jerome has the historic, whole town is historic, well, when you're historic and you qualify as a a building, you only have to pay half your taxes.
Yeah.
So then those homes that are not historic get the brunt of the tax that's left over, so I only pay fifty percent of my taxes. Well, who's gonna pay that other fifty that has to carry the town, all the people that aren't historic? And that was another conversation that I had with some of the people from Jerome, and they're like, you know, on one side they're going, yay, I don't have to pay a whole bunch of taxes, but what sustained your town? You know, these are the things that.
And that's, now, still get you.
So, so I'm just wondering if we can, you know, okay, so they cut, they passed this, and Ducey signed it or whatever, but, you know, maybe he, so I, maybe he was bought off by an Airbnb lobby or something, but, but, you know, if enough cities talk to him, you know, and bring it, you know, to his attention, hey, you know, your building's all.
Well, I I think, I think they tried that, and that's, that's the, now.
Kind of brings right up there with that pension.
Well, and exactly, the the pe- the people managing the pensions were getting.
You know, but what else can we do, I mean?
I mean, you, and that's what you have to continue, you have to talk until you're.
Or, or you can talk to the, to our representatives.
Right.
You're not gonna do anything until you can't send them money, then you get their attention, and that's the bottom.
But then they're gonna abscond on all your property, then they're gonna fill that.
Or, or are they gonna forget to give us our state share of revenue for HERF?
Yeah.
Oops?
Well, if it was not set in, it won't be counted.
Well, we, we don't get it, that's not the, HERF comes from the gas, the gas tax, we have no say in it, say in that, that's automatic, and then we're supposed to get it back. Unless they need to pay for their pensions, then that goes away, cause that happened too.
Another story.
Yeah, that's a, that's a.
Full of conversation, yeah.
I think it's for PSPR, it's me.
Well, I see we have a lot going on.
Okay, uh, the next motion to adjourn?
It's amazing. One more thing I, I wanna say is, if you wanna add agenda items, or items that we should consider, send them back, and then we get a list of them. And we'll go through what we wanna have for an agenda on the next meeting, water will be on there, well, review and water will be on there. Look over your sustainability plan, make notes, and we'll start revising if we need to or go forward, yeah, depending on what decisions we make.
Just a point of information, uh, where, how and where do I get signed, uh, sworn in?
Come to City Hall tomorrow?
Right, the front?
Uh, yeah, tomorrow should be fine.
Nine to five.
Nine, uh, no, well, they're open at seven thirty.
Okay.
Nine, I saw me in last week, or this week.
Okay, you're just gonna hold here and you get sworn in, right?
Yeah.
Bring some form of dedication.
Firstborn child, you know, it makes sense.
We, we, most of you adjourned?
We, most of you, I have a second?
My second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I guess everyone wants to stay.
You know, a lot like this is like really.
No, that's okay.
Are you drinking, are you drinking beer, Matt?
I don't buy it.
You know better.
Can you do your old.
Rachel Carson.